Good evening, Cedar Falls. Welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, or excuse me, Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Danfield.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Danfield absent, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If willing and able, will you please rise to join me at the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item tonight will be an approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting of August 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any changes? Any from the public? Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that does pass, Madam Clerk? And do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have two special presentations tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month, and the second one is a proclamation recognizing September 17th through 23rd, 2023, as National Constitutional Week. And I'll bring those forward now. We've got Ms. Tom Echols with us tonight.
I'll come around to the podium for you. Evening. Thank you so much for joining us. Certainly a sad occasion to have to be here tonight, but want to provide the community's support for the incredible work that mental health professionals are doing and families as well. So, the proclamation tonight reads, "Whereas September is known throughout the United States as National Suicide Prevention Month and promotes awareness of suicide prevention resources available to our community to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, suicide rates have risen by 30% since 1999, and each year more than 45,000 Americans die by suicide. And whereas, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the 2nd leading cause of death among young people aged 10 to 24. And whereas, organizations like the Blackcock County Grundy Mental Health Center are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public due to harmful taboos on conversations about suicide and mental health. And whereas, Cedar Falls is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly and fully support parents, educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, and first responders as partners to prevent suicide in our community. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Suicide Prevention Month throughout the city. And I encourage all residents to inquire about the well-being of family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey appreciation for their lives through any appropriate gesture such as a phone call, message, or handshake, or a card, or a hug, and to learn about local resources that can help our loved ones appreciate that suicide is not the answer. Signed this 28th day of August 2023, Robert M. Green, Mayor."
So, this is yours? And do you have a few words for us?
Sure. Unfortunately, the CDC just came out and suicide rates again are in the increase in the United States. Number of reasons for that, the pandemic, financial concerns, isolation that everyone has experienced during the pandemic, and the lack of mental health resources which continues to plague Iowa as well as many other states. So, we appreciate the acknowledgement and the support that the City of Cedar Falls has had for our efforts.
Sir, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And I'll note too, I've mentioned this in the past, but during my younger years, in my early twenties, I was a Coast Guard officer and had very high expectations of myself, put myself under lots of, lots of pressure, and others, of course, put me under a lot of pressure too, and really struggled with suicidal ideation from my probably 22 to 24 years old. And it was just, there was such a stigma, we didn't seek help for it. And I just sort of powered through. But seeing the resources that are available, I certainly want the community to know, this is something that everyone struggles with, or can struggle with, and it can come out of nowhere as well. So please, seek help. There's no harm in that, there's no stigma attached. And if you just wanted to chat, I'm happy to chat about my experiences as well. So, thank you so much.
Thanks.
So, we have Barb Gregerson here tonight. And Barb, could you introduce your cohort who's with us tonight?
Hello, I'm Barb Gregerson. I'm the Chairperson of Constitution Week for the Cedar Falls Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and Debbie Crawford is our Regent, and Debbie Gudenbauer is my co-chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we've scaled back doing proclamations in the council chambers. I've tried to do those at events or at scenes, but this one especially was so important to do at a city council meeting because it's about the Constitution, and the Constitution is the entire reason we're able to meet here tonight. So, this proclamation reads, "Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the completion of the Constitution of the United States of America by 55 delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia during the summer of 1787. And whereas, the Constitution and its amendments are the foundation of our American democratic experiment embodying the principles of a limited federal government dedicated to rule by law as well as safeguarding the basic rights of individuals in our republic. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas, the aims of Constitution Week are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and supporting the Constitution, to educate the people on the Constitution's basis for America's great heritage and as the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. And whereas, it is fitting and proper for Cedar Falls to annually accord official acclamation to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, as well as to promote patriotic celebrations and educational activities sponsored by the Daughters of the American Revolution and other civic groups. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2023 as National Constitution Week throughout the city. And I encourage all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the Constitution's authors through personal study and understanding of constitutional principles, and by vigilantly working to uphold the constitutional protections guaranteed to all Americans. Signed this 28th day of August 2023, Mayor Robert M. Green." So, congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to say just a few words about the Daughters of the American Revolution, and Mayor Green has allowed me a few minutes. They have served America for 133 years as its foremost cheerleader. Known as the largest women's patriotic organization in the world, the DAR has over a million members with more than 3,000 chapters in 50 states and 13 foreign countries. The DAR has long promoted patriotism through commemorative celebrations, memorials, scholarships, and activities for children and adults, plus programs for new immigrants. We thank you for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on this most important event in America's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. So with that complete, that moves us out of special presentations and into the public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in public forum tonight? You see none, last call. Oh, here we are. Dr. Blackwell.
That was a fast call. Okay, I'm Michael Blackwell. I live in Cedar Falls. I grew up in Connecticut, though. All of my life, with few exceptions, Connecticut has been a blue state. Despite that fact, the Grand Wizard of the Ku Klux Klan used to live in the state, and there were marches of cowardly hooded folks of various ages in the downtown of the city where I lived on more than one occasion. I have siblings who still live in the state, and recently they shared with me that two towns put up signs that said, "Keep our town white." What a blatant hateful prejudiced and racist statement to make. Many places are not so flagrantly disrespectful and overtly evil, but the perniciousness of racism still exists. The oppression, exploitation, discrimination, ostracism, and so forth perpetrated against people of color in the main are not ascertained or discerned to be violent. We are so used to regarding violence as singularly physical and not resident in structures, processes, policies, and services. Preclusion of certain categories of people from the public square, the body politic, the economy, the neighborhood, and so forth, is violence, pure and simple. And often we seem surprised when those locked out of a decent quality of life respond angrily or violently. As the adage goes, violence breeds or begets violence. Over two-thirds of the world is comprised of so-called people of color, particularly in China, India, and countries in Sub-Saharan Africa. By 2050, that percentage will markedly increase. Unfortunately, rather than just realize we are all human and not mere categories within a social construct, we cling to the fallacy of race to maintain stereotypes, biases, stratifications, and so forth. What results is an irrational xenophobia that we cannot shake and that identifies and differentiates us from those people. Such ignorance needs to be overcome. Cedar Falls must find a way to become more receptive and welcoming for non-white peoples. In order to do that, we have to be conscious of the ways in which our personal biases and our institutional structures, processes, and policies create barriers to inclusion overtly and covertly, deliberately and unwittingly. To do so requires clear-eyed and concerted efforts to identify the obstacles as well as to deconstruct the mythologies that conspire to block integration of Cedar Falls. One necessary way to do this is to collaborate with the City of Waterloo to improve the ingress and egress, the opportunities and resources which will enrich the quality of life for all in the metro area. Needless to say, this pluralistic project will not take place overnight after decades of exclusion and non-cooperation. However, we can certainly commence to work on it with assiduousness, attentiveness, and as much alacrity as possible. Instead of being classified as a worst or most miserable place to live, we can become a showcase for what a genuinely humane, equitable, productive, and democratic society can and ought to be. So I look forward to probative steps towards approximating the actualization of this vision of the beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Blackwell. Does anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight?
Good evening. I'm Bobby Joe Page from Grundy County, and the issues that Dr. Blackwell has been bringing, I'm just saying that it should be a concern for the entire Waterloo-Cedar Falls area. And you may think that it's only a Waterloo problem, but didn't Cedar Falls once refuse to let black people live in Cedar Falls? And wasn't it also a sundowning community at one time? So where do you think the folks that were of color went to live? But in northern Waterloo? And now, they're faced with homes that need to be dilapidated, you know, destroyed. They're falling apart, roofs are coming in, they've got issues with contaminated soil and water. And of course, where did they build the ammunition? It's not of any of your fault, but at that time that they built the ammunition dump, or the plant, the logical place was to put it at the north side of where the black folks lived. And I'm concerned about that. And, I mean, I've enjoyed all the white privileges, as all of you have, but I was also brought up, and probably many of you have too, in a Christian home that said, "We are all equal in the sight of God, and we are called upon to help the oppressed, those who have been treated as second-class citizens, if they were citizens at all." I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers for public forum tonight? You see none? Seeing none. Okay. With that, I'll close the public forum. And moving over to staff updates. Mr. Gaines, do we have any updates tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we have two. I'd like to ask Chase Shraggy to give us an update on our river project, and then after that, I'd like to ask Jennifer Pickhar if she could give us an update on our Panthers on Parade project.
Okay.
That we're partnering with the University of Northern Iowa on.
Okay, Director Sheets? Or wait, who's giving that one out?
I'll start off the river project, I guess. So earlier this spring, the city contracted with Peterson Contractors out of Reinbeck to perform the work on the river project. At the time, it was decided to pursue an agreement with the consulting firm, design firm Riverwise, to do some of the in-water inspection work. So we've been communicating with them, and actually, we have a pre-construction meeting with PCI set up for Friday, and as of today, when I spoke with them, they're looking to be in the water potentially at the earliest next week. Some of the early phases of building the coffer dams and redirecting the water, they will start in the water and move, work their way backwards out of the water on the riverbank. And we are anticipating approximately one year of construction work, so about this time next year, late fall timeframe, so.
Okay, thank you, Director Shraggy. And Panthers on Parade?
Well, pending council approval on several contracts tonight, the Cedar Falls Tourism and Visitors Bureau is bringing Panthers on Parade, a community pride project featuring the University of Northern Iowa's TC mascot to the Cedar Valley. Our goal is to bring 25 six-foot fiberglass mascots that will be embellished by local artists and displayed at areas across Cedar Falls, and we want this all to happen May through October of 2024. So we're looking for artists with a you-and-I, Cedar Falls or Cedar Valley or Iowa connection to submit designs of the mascots now through September 22nd. And then we're also out seeking businesses and organizations that are interested in sponsoring a mascot, and they can communicate their interest to us at the Visitor Center at 319-268-4266, or you can go to panthersonparade.com to find out details about artists and sponsors.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pickhar. And of course, that does depend on approval of items 22 and 23 tonight, so stay tuned. That takes us out of staff updates for tonight. I do want to just note, I forgot to mention during the last meeting, welcome back to Noah Heckbart as our U&amp;I student liaison. It's great to have you back with us. This is a program that was implemented back about six years ago, 2017, through council resolution, and it provides for U&amp;I to, through Northern Iowa Student Government, to appoint a member, subject to mayor and council approval, that then that member is seated, doesn't have voting privileges, but certainly has the ability to speak up on issues that are related to U&amp;I, and we were able, last meeting, to get the student perspective on a few items. So very glad to have you back with us, and hope you enjoy your time with us again. So, he's a repeat, he was here last year as well, it's the first time we've had a continuing on, but we're very grateful for that knowledge that you're bringing to the table here. So with that, over to special order of business. Item four is a public hearing to consider entering into an agreement for private development and to consider conveyance of certain city-owned real estate to Cedar Falls Partners LLC. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. And, see, Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications tonight?
I have no written communications to file, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With staff comments for this project, we have Shane Graham, our Economic Development Coordinator. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. On council's agenda tonight is development agreement for a new project in the industrial park for a new 87,000-square-foot industrial warehouse business. This actually will occur on six individual lots in the industrial park. Three of, four of the lots are made up of lots in the existing industrial park and two lots in our new expansion area. So what we did is we combined all six of these lots into a little over an 11-acre parcel suitable for this, for this project. As I noted, the project will be about 87,000 square foot, it'll be for industrial use, distribution. We'll have a taxable valuation of $8,500,000, and a total valuation with land at a little over $9.3 million. Again, the building itself will be for distribution of products, it'll have 27 dock doors, one overhead door. Again, that valuation of just over $9.3 million total, total valuation with the land and the building included. As part of the development agreement, the city would donate that land at no cost, and again, with the valuation being as it is, it would qualify for the five-year tax abatement, which would come before council at a later date after the project has been commenced. So with that, they want to get started on the project fairly soon, pending council approval tonight. They already want to begin site work probably within the next couple weeks and hopefully get a shovel in the ground yet this fall. So, staff would recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graham. Before we go to that, do we have any public comments on this item tonight? Welcome to speak? Okay, seeing none? Then I will close the public hearing and take us over to 4E, which is the Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement for private development and a minimum assessment agreement in approving and authorizing execution of a deed without warranty conveying certain city-owned real estate to Cedar Falls Partners LLC. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any council questions or discussions for this item? See, seeing none, then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Madam Clerk, I, earlier, they were, wanted to check to make sure things were still voting, and mine says the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I need to worry about that? Should I just, like, fake vote? Did you refresh? Um, I, that's, well, let me refresh again. It wants me to confirm form resubmission.
Click yes.
Okay. I'm voting on the Pledge of Allegiance right now. Okay. There we go.
Okay, great.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that approves the item then, and takes us over to old business, where item five is passing ordinance 3038, amending Chapter 23, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, relative to establishing long-term, excuse me, temporary long-term daily permits for municipal parking lots or facilities upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any council discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none? Then, any from the public, any questions on this item or comments? Also seeing none? Then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that passage, that means we can go to item six, which is the Resolution approving and adopting an amendment to the FY '24 Fee Schedule relative to establishing temporary long-term daily permits for the municipal parking lots or facilities. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any council questions or discussion on this? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none? Then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes as well, and takes us over to item seven, which is passing ordinance 3040, amending Chapter 23, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, relative to establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Stener Street and Lone Tree Road upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded? Any council discussion or questions? Okay, any from the public? Yes, Mr. Newcomb? Just name and city for the record, please, sir.
Jim Newcomb, Cedar Falls. I want to thank the council for your consideration of this, I guess, request from the Neighborhood Committee that I represent, as well as our citizens in North Cedar. The Standing Committee considered this on the 17th of July, and then it got brought before the council. Since that period of time, there's been a two-vehicle accident on the 7th of August at that corner, and on August 24th, there was a second accident at that corner, both involving two vehicles. To my knowledge, there was no personal injuries. It's important that this gets passed, our people want it, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none? Okay, seeing none? Then final call for council on the comments? Okay, none? Then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass on its third consideration.
Woo! Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to, but I'd understand if you ejected.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Feel free to slink out anytime you want. Item eight is passing ordinance 3041 amending Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking considerations, requirements for institutional uses in the downtown character district upon its second consideration. And this requires five aye votes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Open for council discussion? Questions? Yes, councilor done.
Mr. Mayor? So I thank everyone who's reached out in this. I guess what I take from either, even if you're a supporter or not a supporter of this proposal, everybody's been very civil, and I appreciate that very much. So thank you. I still maintain my stance of consistency with our new zoning. It's not even really new anymore, but it's a couple of years old. But I want to make, want to make sure we maintain consistency. I want to make sure all players in the game have the same set of rules. So if you're a developer wanting to come develop any property, that you have the same set of rules as a civic or, or institutional entity as well. I know that I'm on the losing end of this as far as the vote, and I'm okay with that, but I do want to make sure that, that is, that I get my feelings or my, my thoughts on this out. And I also just, you know, housing is a big need, and it's a big need everywhere. Quality housing is a big need. This went from a, a proposal that was a mixed-use proposal with, that included housing, and now where we're at, where we're at. And I can respect the process, and I can respect all the citizens and their wants, but that is a, it will continue to be a problem. So I think that's something we should all think about. We can't have businesses running without places for folks to live. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Dunn. Other comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Schultz.
So I respect P and Z, and I respect what they were doing with the code changes. And as Kelly was saying, it's not exactly new anymore, and this was a, a challenge that came up. And we are in that situation of having a lack of parking and lack of housing. But in this particular situation, I think the, the requirements were, were out of, out of line for the property. So I'm still in favor of, of supporting this project in, in my vote. Not necessarily just this individual project, but it's very important to me as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Schultz. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires.
I was going to try and be quiet, but this is such a great thing for the church. They always need more parking down there, and I think we need to look out for our churches in this community, and they've always been a great ally down there. And I think this is just the right thing to do. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So typically, this part, I'll, I use that for questions, but it sounds like I kind of got our cards out on the table here already. But I don't want to shortcut the public's opportunity to, to sway the process. Does anyone from the public want to speak on the item as well? Mr. Hagerty, just city for the record, sir?
Cedar Falls.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz and City Council Reps. Did I say Cruz?
Yeah, I might have.
It's all right.
I might as well sit down. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Tyber. I appreciate it.
Got me. Got me. Oh my, what a way to start. My name is Tom Hagerty. My wife Kathy and I have been lifelong members of St. Patrick's Church since 1948, and we were baptized. We both graduated from St. Pat's School in 1962. We were married 55 years ago at St. Pat's Church. Over the years, I have watched our city grow. As our city grew, so did our church and school. We have always helped our community as it grew, in good times and bad. An example of this was the 2008 flood, where our parishioners prepared food for all the volunteers. And also, our school produced the Sturgis Falls 2022 Grand Marshal and astronaut Raj Chari. Parking for the school and a parish is important. The days when people walked to church is over. Everyone drives to church today. The days when schoolchildren walk to school is over. On-street parking is being taken away every time a nearby street is redone. There is less and less on-street parking. The latest Main Street upgrade will probably no longer allow for street parking on Main Street around St. Patrick's Church. People eventually stop patronizing businesses and supporting civic organizations by their attendance when there's no convenient or available parking for customers. St. Patrick's Church and School is not leaving its current location. The most important reason St. Pat's Parish pursued the recent property, the old Baptist Church, was to address our expanding growth of the parish, the school, the daycare, and Clover Patch. One size does not fit all. No one ordinance will address and accommodate the legitimate needs of the citizens of Cedar Falls. We are pleased by the positive vote of the City Council on Monday, August 21st. The vote reaffirmed my belief that common sense is being exercised by the City Council members. We appreciate the neighboring institutions for their letters of support in your council packet. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I sure miss you up here.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the public comment? Okay, seeing none? Then back to council, any final words? Okay, seeing none? Then it's been moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote. And this does take five ayes to pass.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes the second reading. It'll be back before the council ends at the 18th, September 18th, for our next regular council meeting. And at that meeting, if it's approved at that time with the five ayes at least, then it will become part of the city code of ordinances. So stay tuned. That takes us to item nine, which is passing ordinance 3042 amending Chapter Two Administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to establishing a bicycle and pedestrian committee upon its second consideration. I'll stand easy for a moment here. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded? Open for council questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none? Any from the public? Okay, no comments from the public then? Back to council? Been moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass on its second consideration, and we'll have one more reading at our next meeting for final approval. Item 10 is passing ordinance 3043 amending Chapter 23 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibiting parking on certain portions of Dakota Street upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires.
Did you guys go ahead and, and talk with U and I, and they were good with the 90 minutes?
We have here, probably your best bet is Dr. Henninger is here this evening. He spoke at the last, or the two meetings, two council meetings ago.
Yeah.
And so you can, if you have questions about timing and what works well, Dr. Henninger can give that answer. So would you like to ask your question?
I just did.
If the 90 minutes was okay?
Yes.
90 minutes is okay. Yep, that would be fine. So I, I watched the last council meeting, and it sounded like people were under the impression that just classes go there. It's actually not classes. It'd be better to conceptualize it as a lab space. And so a lot of people from the community come for around an hour to do the, the dementia simulation experience. Also, support groups come there and park. And so it's, it's around an hour that people are there. So the 90 minutes would give them time to come in, do the hour, then leave within the hour and 30 minutes.
One, one more follow-up question. Would you guys be willing to use the U and I police to ticket that and watch over that?
Aye, that's not his call.
I was asking the question whether he would be able to.
But that's not.
I sure couldn't.
That's not his call to be able to say that. That's a question for Department of Public Safety.
Then I have no more questions.
Thank you.
I, I just wouldn't want to put Dr. Henninger on the spot for something. He, he is not authorized to answer.
Yeah, I don't think they'd be happy if I answered that.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Dunn.
Sorry to interrupt, but am I under the impression that we changed it from 90 to two hours?
That's correct. We need to bring that up. So it was changed in the last meeting by council from 90 minutes to two hours. So if the council wished to amend it back, it would be at first reading again.
Two hours is fine. Two hours is fine. Yep.
That was going to be my question. Is, is it two hours okay?
They have taken down the no parking signs, and students have gotten wise to parking on that street where they will park for the whole day. And so having some type of turnover is, is kind of what's needed.
All right, thank you. And did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Thank you all for letting me come here, and I appreciate you all serving. This is an important thing for the city, so thank you.
Okay. So I guess, bringing it back to council then, any final comments before the vote?
I have a question.
Councilor Dever.
I had noticed that they took down those no parking signs right after the last meeting, and I have noticed that cars are parking there for multiple hours on end. Is there, there's nothing we can do as far as citing those vehicles as long as there's no, there's no sign up at all? Is that correct? Yep, I thought so.
I would have to ask them why, why the signs were taken down if we didn't change anything.
I, I did speak with Brian Heathen, and actually, they were taken down like last fall, I believe. They've been that way almost a year.
Oh, okay.
Yep. That was a quest from U and I at the time, why we were trying to develop the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass on the second consideration. We'll be back before the council on its third reading next time. All right, that takes us out of our old business and into the consent calendar. Will these items be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests to consider items separately? Does any council member request to pull an item separately from 11 through 14? Okay, seeing none? Does anyone from the public request to pull an item from 11 through 14 for separate discussion? And we're always happy to do so. Okay, seeing none? Then is there a motion to approve items 11 through 14?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Okay, that does pass, so out of the consent calendar and over into the resolution calendar, where these items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item from 16 through 32?
20.
Item 20 for, see here? Counselor Harding?
16.
Okay. Item 16 for Counselor Dever. Any others? Okay, so we will pull item 16 and 20. Does the public request to pull any additional item for separate discussion? Okay, seeing none? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution calendar with the exception of 16 and 20.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? And requires a roll call vote.
Counselor Cruz?
So Counselor Cruz, we just don't have your voting yet. There we are.
I think it, I think it went there.
Yep, it did.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us back to item 16, which is the resolution approving and authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the health, health insurance fund and the capital projects fund relative to the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Counselor Dever, you had questions or comments?
Well, I had gotten some phone calls on it with people that were asking whether this was additional money being paid for the, the pool, the river project, and the pickleball. And I talked to Jennifer earlier, but I thought maybe I'd have her explain how, how we have to balance the budget from last year to the new year, that it's not new money. They're not getting an additional fund, which was what their question was.
Okay, perfect. So Director Rodenback would like to speak?
Sure. So on the CIP, you may recall through the CIP process that there's projects on the CIP that are designated with general fund savings. And so those are projects in the past or things that we've saved up for, and then when we have enough money, we have those projects. So on the CIP this year, there is $100,000 for pickleball, $300,000 for the river project that are designated with that general fund savings. So this will, this transfer to capital projects will pay for that general fund savings in the CIP. And then also on the CIP, of, of the 8 million committed to the schools, 6.1 million is out of general fund savings. So the 600,000 that we also have for savings can start to add to that 6.1 million. So it's not, it's not the 8 million we committed to the school plus the 600,000. It's the 600,000 will just help get to that amount that we've committed to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Dever. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from council at this point? Any from the public on this item? Yes, Mr. Peekar.
Yeah, just a quick question. Gabe Groh, House Garden Avenue, Cedar Falls. Is it typical that it's this time in the year when that information comes up? I was reading through some today. It seemed like a large number, which I don't know if good or bad, but is it typical that we get that information on June here in September? Is that early or late, or just curious?
Sure. So actually, looking back, this exact same meeting, for the last two years, we've had this conversation. So one of the things that we're doing in finance is, as bills are still coming in in July and August that maybe relate to June expenses, we have to kind of wait to know how the year ended until we have all those expenses, those bills through. So yeah, actually, this is exactly the time of year we, we do this.
So Jennifer, it was just last meeting that we actually reconciled a number of those bills as well, isn't that correct?
Correct. So last meeting, we still had some bills on the list of bills for council that still related back to expenses that were in FY '23.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Last call. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution or approving and authorizing transfer of funds from the general fund to the health insurance fund and capital projects fund relative to fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so that does pass and takes us over to item 20, which is the resolution approving and authorizing execution of First Amendment to the Agreement for Rotary Plaza with the Rotary Club of Cedar Falls relative to additional lighting for the Rotary Plaza being constructed at 205 to 221 West First Street. Is there, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Open for council questions? Counselor?
Yeah, I just had a, I read through it, and I saw it wasn't recommended, and I just wondered if anyone from Rotary was here to answer, you know, why the, the need for the lighting, or is there a need, or what's the prompt behind the amendment?
Short answer is yes, someone is here. I'm Mike Butler. I live at 1022 Washington, Cedar Falls. Been around for a long time.
Evening, Mr. Butler.
Pardon?
Evening, and welcome.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for letting me speak. Gail Bonzel and I have separately been doing project, construction projects for a long time. He is a realtor and me as a banker, we have not had to raise money and support our volunteers while talking things over with architects and contractors. We probably won't do this again. This is a $400,000 project that originally I was hoping we would do for 50, but it kept growing and we keep working on it. We're going to lay, we have laid a concrete foundation under a 40-foot diameter space. We're going to lay granite as the walkway and we're going to have three pieces of granite standing up representing our COVID workers. And I really do apologize, this is my fault. I must not have been clear enough. And anyway, our Cedar Falls club is building this Rotary anniversary project and then we want to be done. I'm not going to be here 50 years from now to be able to pay for the electricity for the seven light bulbs that we're talking about. Gail's not going to be here and we're not allowed to encumber our club for that amount of time. And we're handing it over to the city. You will control it. We will have nothing to say. There are, we have to be careful now because it is a city property and everything we do is a gift to the city. We cannot commit CF Rotary to do the ongoing bills, but at our April 24th meeting, as we were discussing, trying to hook up the electricity behind the RAP station, coming off Cedar Falls Historical Society or out by First Street and needing a new meter, which several people did not think was a good idea. I think that's when this came up, that the city didn't understand that we were going to put light bulbs in. We then approached Cedar Falls Historical Society about an arrangement to come off one of their meters and somehow compensate them for some amount of money. And like Rotary, they said they could not encumber future Historical Society finances. We asked for help pursuing solar. CFU reached out to solar companies, came back and said, we don't really have anyone that is interested in a project this size. We don't see this happening. We reached out to our electrician and put him on a process to try to find a way to do solar. And solar is such a neat idea that I saw, this will be great, you know, this will be, well, it's not great when you have a small project and as our contractor said, in the middle of winter, you're going to have cloudy days and you're going to have a battery process that the city is going to have to take on over time and pay for replacement batteries and all the other accessory things that can go wrong today from his experience with solar. So then we had to come back to the city and say, there's no way we can do this. And personally, I was involved in the Veterans Park and we did not have lighting in the Veterans Park. We got our Freedom Rock in and within a month, somebody went by the early morning hours and spray sprayed our Freedom Rock. Nobody could see it. The neighbor saw it first thing in the morning. It was on his side of the rock. Fortunately for us, CFU Utility Union stepped up, put in a light pole, put in the light for us and a camera. And I believe the city is paying for the electricity on that light pole. So I think it gets done, but not always. Anyway, I had to come back and say, I did not want to come back before this body and have to change anything, but we have to. We're at an impasse. We are a 100-year-old, or we will be shortly a 100-year-old body, but we're, we don't know that we'll be here, you know, 102 years from now. Something may happen. The city will own it and will control it. So I'm requesting that you approve this amendment so that you pay. If we ran the meter, CFU kind of gave me some numbers, we would pay $19.60 basic charge meter fee, if you will, $1.55 for our public streetlights, which I see regularly in my utility bill because I look at it, and then about $2.50 for the electricity, $23.65 a month. If we could connect to your meter that's already there, or at least I believe you have one there close by, because there's some lighting along the berm, we would be looking at, well, I won't give you all the small detail. You would be looking at an additional cost of about $50.60 a year. So you would own it, you would have that cost, you wouldn't be able to see it unless you wanted to pay the extra money, but it would just be part of the ongoing lighting for along the berm. So considering our cost, the quality of the materials that we're installing, we really do hope that it is worth $50.60. And I admit, it won't be $50.60 a few years from now because whatever my electricity goes up by, I'm thinking the cities will too, but for today, $50.60 a year to light it at night. And if we cheated and put it on a timer and only lit it part of the night, we could cut that in half. But again, you know, $24 a year, $50 a year in a budget the size of our cities, really it doesn't matter much. Actually, I'm afraid the timer would cost us more replacing it. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Can I have a question?
Yes, please.
Are the lights necessary for the monument? Are they part of the monument or is this just lights to light the structure?
These are 20-watt uplights so that the monument itself will be lit from the inside, one on each side of the monoliths that'll be in there. There'll be three monoliths and then one right in the center. So these are going to shoot up. They're not actually there, as my wife asks, so what if I have to go to the bathroom at night down there? I wouldn't. There is no lighting in that bathroom or around that bathroom, but this would be the closest lighting unless there's a light on the front of the schoolhouse. But it's, that's all it's there for and it's about as low a cost as we can make it.
Thank you. So another hand, Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, Mike, is there a startup cost to the wiring and that material or are you just talking about the ongoing cost from here on out?
We've already trenched. We actually trenched two ways just in case. We've done the trenching. All that we need is permission to wire in to your meter or if we have to create another meter with somebody else to that meter. So the city's, does not have an upfront cost. It's just the ongoing cost once we tie into the meter.
So not the lights or anything else? That's already being picked?
Yeah. And obviously, if a bulb burns out, that's the city's cost somewhere down the road. If the snow needs removal, that's the city's cost somewhere down the, well, not too far down the road, but it'll feel good. We're going to landscape and if we need the landscaping, if you don't like the landscaping, come spring, it'll be your folks out there changing it. We intend to step away and not control it, partly because we can't. We don't own it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just a clarification off of Councilmember DeBir's. So the actual lights are, they're not around the monument, they're actually, they're uplit, I get that, but are they built into the monument?
They're going to be in the ground.
In the ground.
Looking straight up.
Looking straight up.
And there will be six of them that are symmetrical and then one kind of in the middle that will shine up kind of in a piece like this, giving that some light. So it's not really there for kids to play ball in at night or any of that. It's, that's why they're.
And it was designed originally with these lights or is this something that was added and now we realize that we have to ask for the amendment?
I knew they were there originally.
Okay.
I'm not sure they were drawn in the original plans because we were looking for marketing material and we were talking about lighting abstractly.
Yeah.
But these bulbs are 20 watts, there'd be seven of them. So they're going to generate about 562 kilowatts per year, not per month, but per year.
Okay. All right.
I have another question, but not for Mike though, but more for staff. In the memo that was with it, it talked about comparable situations downtown with Christmas lighting in a North Cedar. Now, I'm not sure what exactly they're referring to. Those aren't actual set structures or are those set structures that may then ask us to pay for them as well?
You're correct, they are not set structures. It would be like the lighting that goes around the trees in the downtown and the meters that are set for that. That is all at Community Main Streets expense, for example.
And at North Cedar, what is that one?
I think it's maybe Neighbor's Park and doing some lighting around there of the shelter and things, again, at their expense to operate that.
Is there any other monuments such as this where the city is paying for the lighting or the electricity, I should say?
I don't know offhand. Mike gave a good example at the.
The Veterans Park.
Yeah. I don't know for sure who's paying that, but his guess is probably on point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So Stephanie, what department would this fall under? Would it be Parks Department or Tourism Department or what, when this gets turned over? Well, what about RAP and the schoolhouse? Who operates and controls budgets on those?
The Historical Society pays those.
For the whole, they do the lawn care, they do the everything or?
They do, they pay for the electrical for those facilities. I'm not sure, I'm guessing the city maybe mows the parks since we own the land.
Okay. So how do we compare to our other parks that we mow the lawn and we do upkeep? We have lighting in those parks. What budget does that come out of?
Well, if it's lighting the ball fields, then that's rec.
Well, I'm talking more like Surly Park and Pfeiffer Park and Lookout Park and Clay Street Park. Who, where's that money come from?
Comes out of parks. Yeah.
So how could this, could this be incorporated in a similar budget line within the parks?
Correct. You know, I think for us, it's just knowing that, I assume it's just letting CFU know who to send the bill in to add it on to our bill. Anyone who's seen our electric bill, it's got a lot of lines on it where we go charge it, whether it's sewer or parks or rec or whatever. We split all that out every time the utility bill comes.
Yeah.
I think, and Chase can correct me, I think if you ran it through your meter, you wouldn't have any idea what your cost was.
It'd be that.
If you just ran it through your meter and saved the other.
Yeah.
$25 or $30 a month.
It's like I've told you before, Mike, if I had your money, I'd burn mine.
Yeah.
I'm only joking.
No, I understand.
Let's keep ourselves going forward, please.
Just clarification. I thought I heard earlier it said that the meter belonged to the Historical Society. So if we added to that meter, wouldn't the bill then go to the Historical Society?
We can't add it to theirs. They've already declined. We're asking if we could add it to your meter.
So there's two meters. There's a city meter there and there.
I think there's three or four meters. Two of them are Historical Society, but there are meters on the back of both of the buildings.
Can we confirm that from staff that there'd be a?
He's right, there are several meters there. And while we've talked about having a separate meter for this, then recently it came to light that the meter for the levee lighting could be a possibility, which is what Mike's talking about.
Okay, so just tapping into that. All right.
You lose accountability, you couldn't blame us anymore, which is a good thing for Rotary, but it would also save money.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Then it's been moved and seconded for this resolution approving and authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Agreement for Rotary Plaza at the Rotary Club of Cedar Falls relative to additional lighting at Rotary Plaza constructed at 205 to 221 West First Street, requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass and takes us out of the resolution calendar and over into bills and claims. Is there a motion to approve bills and claims for September 5th?
Some of.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any council questions, discussion? Any from the public? Okay, if nothing, then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Counselor Cruz.
I keep getting a refresh quest. I vote aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us over to council updates and announcements. Do we have any for tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
I've been talking with some concerned citizens about First Street and Union Road and the site distance and how far we have to come out to look to the west when you're southbound. If Chase could refresh us a little bit on what he's been working on with that, him and I had had a little discussion before, but I have had quite a few people that say it's quite a hazard there.
Director Shaw.
Sure. So approximately a year ago in July of '22, I know Mr. Cruz made a referral regarding investigation of a traffic signal analysis or warrants at that intersection of First and Union. I worked with the DOT District Engineer and received information back from them at the time and actually none of the warrants were met. I can provide that information to all you folks tomorrow. Regarding the site distance, I know in the past we've had one other issue with that of southbound traffic on Union Road coming from the north part of town and looking back west regarding private property, grass area or right adjacent to DOT right of way being too tall and can't see. But we can have staff go out and work with DOT staff on that, see if we can get something done there, so.
That would be great. I appreciate it. Thanks, Chase.
Any other updates or announcements? Seeing none, then over to referrals. Do we have any referrals to present tonight? Didn't see any in the packet. Okay, no referrals, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for attending.